Sure, number six. I'll try to make my message quick. Ready? All right. We have all the members of council that we expect to be present. Present. And so I'll call to order this evening's July 6th meeting of the Wabash City Council to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, it's still a real distinct pleasure to be able to get together in person and have our guest speakers in person. And tonight, I know we have from Russell City Lines, Joe Jacobson and Brian Carlson from the Southeast Minnesota Transit Initiative, if you'd like to join us at the podium and share with us whatever information you'd like us to be abreast of. Welcome.
Good evening. And Mayor and Councilors, Joe Jacobson and I are appreciative of the time we wanted to give you a quick overview of an update on some of these, we've talked about regional transportation planning for Southeast Minnesota. Some of you, I'm sorry for the record, I'm Ryan Carlson, here on behalf of Southeast Minnesota Together.
And I'm Joe Jacobson, on behalf of Southeast Minnesota Together also.
We've got some slides that are in the packet for this evening. And our intent this evening is to give you an overview. Some of you had heard from Joe and myself a couple of years ago, when we were working on at that time some regional transportation planning. So we'll give a quick overview of that, let you know what we've been up to for the last couple of years, and then you can get a heads up as to what we can do. Next, please. Back in 2015, 16, and 17, a grassroots economic development organization, Southeast Minnesota Together, represented by a number of folks all over the 11 counties in Southeast Minnesota, got together as a part of, or was funded by an initial grant from Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund. And one of the things that they're studying were items that were of importance to Southeast Minnesota. On the screen, we talked about housing, we talked about workforce, we talked about transportation, and we talked about regional collaboration. Those are just icons on the screen for some of those particular items. But one of the things that occurred back in 2015 and 16 is that we heard from members from across Southeast Minnesota, communities, counties, councilors, just like your senators, mayors, about the issues that were affecting Southeastern Minnesota. And of those issues, we chose to study further those particular four items, housing, workforce, transportation, and how the region works together. Next, please. In 2018, we applied for a grant from MINDOT. MINDOT sponsored a study for a regional transportation coordinating council. And it was at that time when Mr. Jacobson and I came down and shared some information with you to talk about what the MINDOT focused studying was looking at. And at that time, we were really focused on helping human services delivery and the needs around that particular area of transportation and that nexus of transportation in the area. We did have regional wide engagement, 11 counties of Southeast Minnesota, essentially from Interstate 35 on the west to the river on the east, Goodview County on the north, and the Iowa border on the south. And at that time, we were looking at some particular areas of interest that MINDOT had that wanted us to look at how that transportation planning would affect those helping human services needs. And in that process, we had convenings around the region, we had meetings in a number of communities, including this particular building. And one of the things that we heard very loud and clear was that Southeast Minnesota needs transportation for helping human services clients and the special needs that they have. And there's also a need to be able to support employment and tourism and hospitality and education and a lot of different things that are going on in the region. Next, please. This was the region of study that we had for that particular queue for MINDOT. So it's the 11 counties in Southeast Minnesota. And we had convenings that reached out across the entire area from as far down as Elverly in the southwest and what's on in Northfield in the northwest, down to Winona and other locations across the region as well. Next, please. Of course, as we're all aware, in 2020, the pandemic changed a lot of things. It changed how services were delivered, a lot of people working from home. It reduced the commuting need for a lot of people. And in that process, there was a commuter bus service that operated in Southeast Minnesota that was discontinued because of that demand that quickly disappeared. However, we're fortunate, we are moving forward. We have all but come through the pandemic. Certainly, there are still issues that are there, but we're also planning for the future. And we know that there are needs that we need to address that are going to help us deal with a rebounding economy, a need for employees, and the need for transportation to be able to help those folks move around the region. Next, please. One of the things that we are keenly aware of is from an economic development standpoint and an economic and by child standpoint, that our employers in the Southeast Minnesota region are really trying to expand and grow. It's no surprise to any of you sitting here that workforce demand is higher than it has ever been. And one of the things that we're sensitive to is finding the right kinds of employees who may not necessarily live in Wabash or maybe they're not even in Wabash County. They're somewhere in the region, but they still would like to be working here. How do we address some of those issues? We do know that there are a lot of employees that still need to travel to get to work. They might be healthcare, they move around, so not everybody will be working from home. We also know that students are returning to school, we know that hospitality insurance is starting to pick up. We're very pleased about that, as is certainly the city of Wabash with a lot of need and being able to decide. So what details do we know? Next, please. We reached out and talked to DEED, Department of Employment and Economic Development, and we got some key numbers. And these were created from Mark Schultz, who works at the Regional Office down in Illinois. I won't show you all the numbers for every single county and city in Southeast Minnesota. They are available, we'd be happy to share them with you if it's of interest. But specifically for Wabash County, the number on the left-hand side of the screen tells us that 3,000 people come into Wabash County every day to work. And 6,700 people leave Wabash County every day to work. There's about 4,000 people, the number on the bottom of the screen, that stay within, excuse me, that live in Wabash County and work within Wabash County. Next, please. Here are two representative city numbers in their city in Wabash. But one of very important things we want to talk about today, the number on the left-hand side of the Wabash numbers shows that 1,300 people come to Wabash every day to work. And 700 people leave, and there's about 600, 550 that stay here. So what is this telling us? It's telling us that there's still a need. Now granted, respecting the fact that numbers that are on the screen are pre-pandemic levels, so maybe those numbers are slightly less than they are today. Excuse me, the numbers today are slightly less than that which is on the screen. But the issue is, as our economy continues to rebound, that demand is going to continue to build back up, likely to pre-pandemic levels. What the timeframe is on that, I can't say. I'm not in the business of being able to forecast how quickly that will occur, but we know what we'll get back to. Next, please. Just for point of reference, we're in one county as well. We're starting about 10,000 people, almost 11,000 that come into Wabash County every day. Some would travel and come to Wabash County and drive into Wabash County, 8,600 people that leave. And there's 15,000 people that stay within Wabash. I'm going to click through the following slides, we just highlighted a couple. Again, we've got data from each of the cities, and we aren't necessarily looking to go through every one of them. Next, please. But Goodview County is still one, 10,000 people come in, 14,000 people leave every day. Next, please. Some city data there for those red wings of Rota. Next, please. Olmsted County, of course, many of us are very familiar with the fact that there's a large economic center there for many reasons. But the interesting part there is that even though there are a lot of, there's a greater population within Olmsted County, there's still 3,000 people that drive into that county every day to work. And there's an 18,000 that exit the county to go to work elsewhere. Maybe the Wabash County, maybe the Winona, the Utah area places as well. Next, please. No surprise, these are some of the numbers for the city of Rochester. And again, not necessarily to dwell on the details, but the issue there is that DEED was helpful for us in being able to document, help us understand what that transportation need is within the area. Next, please. So where are we? Based on the information that we had received from DEED, we know that there is still a need for transportation around the region. Mr. Jacobson and I are here this evening talking about transportation planning for the region. We know that cities and counties are receiving some federal stimulus funds, and that's the reason we're here this evening is to be able to ask how we might be able to partner on doing some transportation planning in the region. As you're well aware, the federal funds that are available to you are city, but to be used for city-selected projects. There's no firm list, that says this project is in or out. There is guidance, as you're well aware. And one of the things that we're requesting, as noted on the bottom turn of the slide, is that we're requesting to allocate a small percentage of those funds specifically to help us organize and set up a regional transportation system for Southeast Minnesota. Specifically, what we're asking for is a commitment of $2.50 per capita for that organizational setup. So what does that give us? That would help us get the organizational structure pulled together for essentially transportation management organization for the region. What that looks like down the road is yet to be determined. I can't tell you that within X amount of months that there would be a new bus system running throughout the region, but indeed, that's our ultimate goal, is to figure out what that new transportation system might look like. And ultimately, that would need to be funded by likely a federal-funded program to be able to provide that sustainable funding for the regional transportation system. Next, please. So the issues that are in discussion right now, who would lead this organization? What would the plans be for a pilot project? What would that look like? What are those long-term funding sources? And that long-term plan for operational sustainability and funding sustainability to be able to keep that system operating? So Mr. Jacobson and I are not here to say we've got all the answers, but our intent is that we want to be able to start that process, to be able to establish that transportation management organization that allows us to determine how can we make this regional transportation system become a reality and a reality. Next, please.
Did I miss them?
Oh, no, I think that should be in. Comments you would like to make, other things?
Well, there's some questions. Yeah, we can open it up for questions, but I just want people to know, Brian and I are volunteering at this point right now. But it's really, no matter where we work, what we're doing, we are doing this for our better of the region. I grew up in Grand Meadow, I live in Stowe, I'm a small-town person. You know, I fish here every week. And it's just one of those things that I realize, not, it's not about just helping human services, but how we can all work together, how public and private can work together to make things happen. So if you have an appointment at Mailplanning and you live in Wabash, how can you get there? And maybe it's a connection between Free Rivers and another service, or whatever that happens to be. There's a program happening right now at the state level called Moss, where it's a mobility app to allow people to, I think they got 14 million dollars to make this app. But it brings all the private and public sectors together. Or if I want to go from Wabash to Rochester, or to St. Paul, or Minneapolis, whatever it is, it could be from ride share, it could be from a bicycle, it could be walking. Free Rivers, Rochester City Lines, Jefferson, it could be the rail, all of those things are working in that program, I'm helping pilot that right now. Those are the things that are happening. And then on this side of it, I feel very good about the future of transportation because now we're starting with a new foundation. It's not just about one employer in Rochester. It's really about how can we, you know, connect all of these times? If you live here and work in Minneapolis, what options do you have? If you live out there and work down here, what options do you have? Or you want to go from Wabash to Lake City, or you want to go from, you know, Wabash to La Crosse? What options are there? Or across the river? We don't want to define the lines because we feel that's really going to hurt the workforce especially. I mean, especially if you're just across the river on a bridge, those types of things. So we're really hoping that everybody has the same vision as we go forward, that this is very open. So as Brian mentioned, the TMO, Transportation Management Organization, we're looking to put that together to be able to ask for federal dollars to be able to be self-funding after a few years, whatever it is we bring together. But it's a massive project. It's not something that's going to be very simple. We look at using these dollars to actually hire contractors and ways, like we've worked with Gimley Horn in the past and others, that would help us with information that they're doing in Colorado or they're doing in Washington State. So they're doing these same types of things, these transportation management organizations in other parts of the country, and they're working very, very well. So that's kind of where we're leaning to get some of that transportation. So we'll open it up to questions.
I got a few. First of all, I think it's vulnerable to do that. We have a lot of older people on the county here, and disabled that can't get your ride share back to public use and ride share or whatever, and it's been a problem. Now, that 250 that you're asking for, are you asking for counties?
We were asking counties and cities.
The same among?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're actually going to private organization, company. It's going to need a larger model.
Yes, yeah. And when we did the local transit, we invested in that, and it paid back.
Yes.
Money, we were making that. So.
And just to open that up a little bit, there's a, the University of Minnesota sent me something about getting federal dollars to help with the ride share, even without a bus. It might be that you have somebody that wants to help somebody, but get paid for it. And instead of an Uber-type thing, it's actually a federal dollar's coming. Instead of you buying your own bus and doing your own thing in a smaller community to do some of those types of things, you can actually get those dollars to come in to help with private.
As a small community, we do have a lot of individuals that transport people back and forth, and they don't ask for any money or anything.
Right.
But it is.
It's a volunteer program, but there's still a cost to them.
Turn it around.
Yeah, it is. And then to get, you know, ADs and land vehicles and things like that, that the city can run or whatever. I think very open about this, I don't want to have any, it's really nice to get together with communities because they always give us something, just like, oh, that's a good idea. So, other question?
I just want to come and say thank you, and thanks for giving us a little preview into where the organization was moving prior to this meeting for council. As you know, we're part of a rural transit pilot, which is sponsored by Minnesota Department of Transportation. We're really lucky, I think, to be selected for that, and how we can be engaged in your work, you know, given what we hope to learn through that process is timely. So we look forward to that, that, you know, relationship developed out of our Greater Minnesota Futures work, which developed out of the Southeast Minnesota Together work. So certainly seeing the fruits of all this collaboration long-term.
And we're glad that Wabash was selected. Mary Vogel from the University of Minnesota had asked Mr. Jacobson and myself to assist in the kind of guidance and planning of what does that project look like for City of Wabash? And I have not seen the most updated version of that. So I think she was hoping that that would work off, I think, after first.
Just now, yes, right?
So we're excited to be able to be assisting in that process, as well as looking at other things.
Just a comment, we, I have included in the proposal the amount that would be our 250 per capita, which is about $6,700 with our American Rescue Act grant fund planning. So we'll be discussing that later, and I can let you know the outcome. I don't think we're formally approving anything tonight, but we'll just, we have it in our plan. So I just want to make sure there is some background for council members on that inclusion of $6,700.
Thank you. Some more questions? Yes, we.
I was just wondering, so. Years ago, my daughter was still living here, you know, but there was no way for them to be able to afford transportation up and down. Would this be able to help people like that, and might be looking, young people especially, who live currently?
Yeah, I can answer that. You know, once you start receiving federal dollars, maybe better than, obviously as a private organization at Rochester City Line, I don't want to speak for them, but it allows those student passes, it allows workforce passes, it allows, you know, handicap or veterans go for free, or all of those types of things, once those dollars start coming from the state, that really, really helps that type of program. I also want to mention, just on the Rochester City Line side, some of the costs because of the no commuter in town here and Lake City and other places, you know, we get calls from the Eagle Center in Wabash, and we do a lot of tours for them, but their costs have went up $200 a trip because there's not a bus located in Wabash anymore, a store here that we have very short distance to do that. So it affects a lot of things when we do this. And those people like that that want to, you know, have that motor coach available to them in Wabash, that's not there anymore, so their costs went up considerably. But it's just, it's a huge effect on what happens.
So would you be knitting together, you know, with Iowa Transit?
Yes.
All the other things Rochester said, would you be knitting those all together?
Definitely, exactly what our thought was years ago. And it's really hard to get private and public working together, but with Moss and this TMO, the TMO, just so you, if Wabash City was to agree to $2.50, our fiscal agent right now is Southeast Service Corps. So until a TMO gets up and running, that's where the funds will go and then dispersed for this project, for the TMO.
One other item, Caroline, I think we have shown this, it might be in your hat, if not, we can make sure that it is. The Southeast Minnesota municipalities have been very supportive of our efforts for regional transportation planning, in fact, they have proposed.
Resolution?
Resolution for the council to consider, should you choose to move forward on this. So that's not in the pack, I'm sure that that can be provided at a later time. But again, that comes from Southeast Minnesota municipalities, of which City of Wabash is a part. So if that is something of interest, we'll make sure that we get a copy of that over to you. Essentially, it's the formal resolution that says, here's what the City of Wabash agrees to do, and at least that way you've got the ability to take action on that as a council as well.
How does it work out if City of Wabash comes up to mind for this, I'm sure we can? And let's see, other cities opt out? How does that?
And we haven't thought about that because we just think everybody's blanked it. And I guess I don't have an answer. I would say you have to think regionally, no matter what you do, but I can't speak for that without. Our Southeast Minnesota Together group really coming out.
I guess one thing that, let's say, city's not though. That's not a good, put a pulse to this program.
We're going to go forward, no matter if the dollars are there, it's just how long is it going to take? And can we really set this up? And can two guys in a truck be able to make this happen? I mean.
That needs already taken, I'm sorry.
It's just not going to be, as, you know, we really need some full-time employees. And I personally have a goal, I mean, I think it could get done in two good months with the current administration and the other things that are happening. I think the Fed will definitely see this as a need. There was something that happened, and it was abrupt, and it definitely affects the whole region. Be very easy to write that right.
Do you have any examples of a successful regional transportation system set up somewhere in the country?
We can get them from Mary Vogel, or Mary Carlson, from Gimley Horn, we've been working with them, and some others. So I have some grant writers that do the same type of thing across the country, and there's plenty of success stories, and even ones that are starting just like this.
Sure, and I'll add to that as well. The success stories we're talking about are not necessarily how does it sound in San Francisco or Denver or Seattle. The success stories that we know are documented are, how does this work for rural Nevada, rural Oregon, or rural Wyoming, rural Texas? And those are the similarities that we're really trying to look at for how does this work for rural Southeast Minnesota? As we're all aware, when you get to Minneapolis and St. Paul, there's a very well-established and long-established metro policy transit system, but not so much in outside Minnesota. So that's the change that we're trying to be able to affect for Southeast Minnesota, going on the previous work that's been done in other states, and specifically in rural areas as well. Yes, if you have your goals together and be able to, so you've got a ready story of how would that work?
And I know one of the things we're going to be called to do in our rural transit pilot initially is to develop this, getting a stakeholder to dig in on those specific details, as well as the specific needs of our communities. So for whoever's interested in participating, that call will come pretty soon. That is fantastic update for us. Thanks very much for being here in person, and any further questions?
And any further questions that come up, we'd be happy to, if you want to send those.
Great.
To Mayor and Caroline.
Absolutely.
Again, thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks for keeping us updated all along. Thanks for keeping us updated all along. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. All right. And public comment, do we have anyone who'd like to make public comment? If you do, just approach the, the podium, you can state your name and residence for the record. I'm seeing none, just checking. All right. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Dean, I know you wanted to comment on item.
Yeah.
Where you want to pause there on eight six?
Item four.
Okay, item four. Got it. Under changes or additions, yes.
Um, I would like to add, uh, just a discussion on dredge.
Sure thing. Dredge discussion will add as general business ten nine. Ten nine. Stop me if I plow through that, please. Okay.
I have a.
Yeah, Jess, any?
For consent, we have eight, ten. There is a St. Elizabeth's Community Development Foundation. There is a raffle permit. They would like to call for September seventeenth.
Okay.
Which just needs approval.
Raffle permit for St. Elizabeth's Community Development Foundation. That'll be eight, ten on the consent agenda. Any other additions or changes? All right. I'll keep my presentation short. I really appreciate that in-depth update. Happy early fourth of July to everybody. Really good library programming. If there's small children in your life who haven't, you know, had the privilege of attending library programs. I can speak from experience in that they're really excellent. Um, I've relied on childcare mostly, most of my parenting life to take my kids to those programs. And I've just had the opportunity recently to do it myself and it's been wonderful. Thanks so much to the library staff. Uh, Riverboat Days is coming up. I think they're still looking for volunteers. Tyler, is that right?
I'm glad we're looking for volunteer.
Sure, always, as always, um, the Riverboat Days, um. Well, I'd say contact chamber staff would probably be the quickest way to get that. Information to the right people. And then, of course, that's July thirtieth and thirty first, and we look forward to that. Um, I'll, I'll just comment that we had as we, um, were tasked with personnel, ad hoc personnel met to discuss. Um, the language in Caroline's administrator contract that reads that she has some privileges related to remote work. And we feel that it's been going well. She's gotten positive feedback from staff, um, and feels that it's still tenable. I'm always cautious because remote work can sometimes, as Tim and others probably know, becomes another sort of type of work and sometimes more work than regular work. Um, but right now our recommendation is to maintain that, uh, exactly as her contract is written until the period of her. Um, performance evaluation, or if she has concerns, otherwise she can certainly bring that to our attention. Um, as I mentioned, we're going to entertain, um, Mary Vogel and other members of the study team who will guide us through a rural transit pilot. So as I just said, kind of offhand, they will be looking for stakeholders to participate in that. And as I think, um, was made clear to us this evening by Brian and Joe, this isn't just, uh, you know, one type of transit that we're familiar with. For instance, High Water Valley, it would be, you know, anything under the sun that helps people get between their. Place where they are and the place they need to be, whether that be for services or work or entertainment or otherwise, uh, education and others. So, uh, stay tuned and I'll probably communicate through Caroline. She can let us know when we've gotten our, our, our call to action related to that pilot. Um, and then we have, we had good news and I don't think, I don't know that we relayed this in the June. Meeting, no, because it hadn't happened yet. Um, in the federal transportation bill, our three point two million dollar request. Uh, for monies, uh, affiliated with the Highway sixty reroute were included in full. So that request was not diminished. Um, Congressman Craig wrote that into that bill. Um, last I heard, we don't have any further news, but it was, it was not. Cut in half, as is oftentimes the case when you make a request of that magnitude. We, we look very much to hearing what comes of that. I think I'll leave it at that. And any, uh, committee reports, I'll start. Did you guys have utilities today?
No, we didn't because of the, or yesterday, because of the holidays.
Right, right.
We're having it Monday.
Okay, sounds good. And John is not here. Um, Craig, do you have, just I put you on the spot. I knew John wasn't going to be here. I should have asked you in advance. Do you have an update from Port? Otherwise I'm sure I can lean on Tyler and Caroline.
Hold on, we've had June. We'll be meeting in two weeks. Uh, we talked about our terminal and things.
Anything else from that meeting? I was not present for that, that more recent port meeting. It's already there in the administrative report. Okay. Um, and let's see, Tony's not here with streets or parks. Are you aware of any major updates to those commissions? Okay. And.
Planning?
Planning, planning. We do have news from, they've got, they had.
Yes, we had a meeting, uh, the fifteenth, uh, June fifteenth, and, uh, actually what we're talking about on ten.
Over that.
Review that over there. So.
Good.
Yeah, that's all we did.
Got it. Any other staff updates that you'd like council to be aware of at this time? We've gotten really good, really appreciate the written reports from all the departments and of course from the administrator. That is very helpful. I find myself not only reading them in depth, but then going back to them as a point of reference before, before our meeting. So thank you very much for the time that goes into those reports. And any other good news people would like to share? Otherwise we'll move on to the administrator's report.
Almost as, as we started the budget process, um, Caroline and I, um, are thinking Tuesday, August twenty fourth, for the council budget workshop. So that's on the schedule. I have it now. It's certainly major scheduling conflicts anybody is aware of.
In the afternoon or?
Okay, Tuesday, August twenty fourth, three P M for our budgeting workshop, workshop. And that's tentative, but the sooner we get on the calendar, the better. I feel like pre-pandemic life is just swooped right in and the calendar is going up fast. Okay. Anything further? All right, Caroline, we'll hear the administrator's report.
Yeah, this is a little longer today, just to, I'll try to keep it quick, but there is a lot happening. Um, so, um, one thing that is happening with the Port Authority is the potential of. Hiring, um, a CEDA staff member very like one day a week to provide community and economic development services. And I have a list of things that I just simply do not have time for, but you know, one example is mosquito field. It's there, has a couple of issues, but I mean, ready for development. Um, you know, getting our revolving loan fund through the USDA Rural Loan Program, that seems like an easy. Program we have, we're sitting on a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's not moving out. There's new opportunities for deferred loans. So we just need to create a program, publish it, and, and those would be some things that I think a staff member could do. Um, and then, so it does look like we will get that Minnesota deed grant, but I did reduce it to a hundred seven thousand dollars. Because they came back to me with the comment that they can't have improvements that expand services. So we can still do the HVAC replacement or an automated door entry or. Plastic shields, but it can't be anything that expands the business, unfortunately. However, if a business would want to expand, that's where I'm hoping to revamp the USDA revolving loan program. So they could get a grant for their HVAC improvement and maybe pair that with the USDA. Um, we did receive a one point six million dollar grant, uh, to support the work, um, the Main Street improvements, which we covered. Um, and then I'll just skip around, um, Mind dot has offered an initial pro, proposal of one point six million. For turnback funding for the Highway sixty reroute. That is a lot less than what Brian had hoped and we had budgeted for. So we will be responding with a counter offer. And I have just been looking at the financials for the EMS and ambulance service. And I wanted to share those and get some feedback because I know we have a lot of, um, expertise in that, in this group. So just some kind of trends we're looking at, you know, the, it's really difficult. We've relied on the model of, of volunteers and that's gone away. So we've needed to hire their staff, paid staff to get all the shifts covered to offer a twenty-four hour service. Um, here's what we budgeted for in twenty twenty-one. And we are looking at a billing issue because right now, whereas I think we billed two hundred thousand dollars in expenses. We only have almost just forty thousand dollars in revenue that's come in. That's a lot. And so we should be halfway through the year, about one twenty-five. So, um, Ed and I have a meeting next week with the billing company, which has gone through a lot of staff turnover to figure out what's going on with that problem. Um, and so this is where we kind of sit the downward trends of our net income over, you know, since twenty seventeen. Kind of trending downward. Um, and it, to date, for budgeted amount, we would be budgeted at. Uh, negative a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one. So one thing that we've explored is partnering with other communities. Um, so this is twenty nineteen calls. The city of Wabashaw had sixty-six percent of the calls, and then you can kind of see that. Uh, the township of Greenfield is about twelve percent. And then it kind of, you know, gets pretty small after that. And then looking at twenty twenty, we were sixty-three percent, Greenfield sixteen percent. So I think there is some opportunities that have been started to sort of try capturing income from other communities. But I think it's not, I mean, we still are a good majority of the calls. Um, and some additional data for twenty twenty, there were four hundred twenty-three total runs. Um, and then in terms of transfers, we took fifty-five and we did not take twenty-one. And then I looked at some additional data that I, I didn't have on here. But for twenty twenty, there was. Um, advanced life support transfers that we never take because we don't have the paramedics. That approximated three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars in revenue that Lake City kind of captured. So we didn't have the paramedics. Um, so, um. So one of, uh, the ideas that I have is there is a group called Safe Tax Solutions. That provide, that's based in Minnesota and could provide an external business analysis. Um, I do plan to follow up with the townships on the specific deals for the ambulance, ambulance taxing district. Chad and Tim started that process. It might be a matter of getting it going. Um, and so. Of course consultancy services are not cheap. Um, so I did get in touch with them in advance of this. Meeting, they do a three-month process with us. They would look at the past five years of profit and losses, financial statements. Pyramid, ambulance charges through an in-depth review, but their cost is thirty thousand dollars. So one thought that I had would try to be, to raise half of that with grants and contributions potentially. Um, and then see, could we match it with another half? Um, just kind of give in the losses, even though that's a lot of money. If it's somebody that could help us get back in the green, we could potentially pay our investment back. My next step is to contact references for Safe Tax Solution. I've obtained three or four references of communities that have undergone this assessment. One is in rural Wisconsin, rural Wyoming, and just say, was it worth it? How did you pay for it? Um, and so I'm just looking for feedback from, um, council. Um, on these plans and specifically if, um, council members would like to join in the meetings. Or, um, was it just you and Chad before?
Correct.
Okay, so does that, and then just, does that make sense for us to go back out again, you know, start those meetings? So looking for feedback, I guess.
So a question that came up, so you said you were, you were talking to one of these companies that they're supposed to cover the costs for us. And some of them, you're still waiting to hear from them?
Yep. Essentially, we've got just this year, two hundred thousand dollars in outstanding bills, but only forty thousand collected.
So, um, when will we know? Is there still money to be collected or that's still in processing? When will we hear that?
I'm trying to find out those answers as quickly as possible. So we'll find out next week. Yeah. But it's, that's an emergent problem that I'm concerned about, but then just kind of, okay, the bigger picture, the long-term picture. That's even outside of the billing issue that we have.
It sounded like from your discussion with Ed, maybe you can even channel that, that billing issue is more severe than in years past. In terms of percent collection at this mid-point of the year.
In the office, the turnover has slowed because they've switched over on staff. We used to receive checks every couple of weeks and we haven't seen anything. Okay.
Yeah, that was giving my comment. That would be the first and foremost to look in, not just collection, but are we billing that? Are we billing right? Are we, you know, doing everything with billing correctly? Um, and making sure that, you know, granted, we can only bill so much for Medicare. We're only going to get so much back. But how are we recovering funds that don't get paid by insurance? Are we, you know, are we getting, are we sending them bills for the remaining portion? You know, that, how much have we received? You know, I, I think a lot of this stems from that. Um, but I also agree that, um, I wouldn't go with the taxing district. We kind of went more down towards like the, a contract than figured out. Cause when you get into the taxing district, there's a lot more government involvement and then you lose control of the ambulance and the city would.
Thirty-three percent of the calls, you know, that, that structure might not represent.
Yeah, I don't, so we talked about at the meeting, not really doing a taxing district, much more of the, kind of almost like a fire contractor or a contract. Based off of per capita, per run, whatever you could do. I, I, I'll pull up some notes. I, that's the route we were leading and almost everybody was fine with that.
Okay.
Um, I think we lean come back to townships. We should probably have more formal plan is what I'm kind of thinking. So putting numbers to things, that's what they want, or at least we do want. They want to know how much it's going to cost them, but I think we also need to be clear why we're doing it. I mean, basically getting the service for free without chipping in anything. So.
In spirit, you didn't get any pushback.
No, not really. You know, all the, all the, all the townships outside of Greenfield were, yeah, they were just, you know, just let us know and it sounds like a great idea about the law. So I think Greenfield wanted more numbers. They want to know what it's going to cause, what, you know, how we're going to do it and stuff like that. So I think if we do go to townships, it should be much more formal.
Okay.
Um, that would be my recommendation. Number three on here is a little misleading. We didn't take on our transfers and we paid two thousand per transfer. But that doesn't take into effect all the costs that we have, everything that you add. So you're not really going to make two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So it's a little misleading, but I think we need to look and I think we just need to be better at our team taking transfers. I mean, I, I'm sorry to say it, some people just don't do it. So, or don't like to do it. I don't like to do it. We have to. I mean, it's, it's the way it is, but I don't know about the consulting firm. My question on that is, can we get the benefit out of it that we're going to put into it as far as cost? Yeah, if we go to them, they're good at what they do and stuff, they come back. I think it's something you bring back and say, yeah, these guys are worthwhile. It, it's a hard trend. It's a trend across the country. It's not how to get people to do it. How, you know, I mean, it's, it's a lot of work just to become an E M T and a paramedic. So I, I mean, I think you just need to, I don't know. I, I don't have a solution for that because it's a dying thing. But we'll have to talk about that and I'm open to, and I'm sure Ed's open to any idea that you possibly come up with, so.
So I'm wondering, you know, should we wait and see if we can recover costs easier or more quickly? Or should we see what the problem is there before we move ahead or think about going in with consultant?
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I want to talk to the references because like I said, it's a steep price. And if they tell us something that we already knew, we just needed to do it, it's probably not worth the time. But I, what I'm missing is a business acumen to say, there's, what would it cost, you know, the business.
But it's Tim's point, what is the business model of those transfers?
Yeah.
And how do you?
I, I think the two things we don't do immediately is the billing issue and the, the talking to townships. Um, I think those two things we can work on as soon as possible. And that would recover hopefully some costs, I think. I don't know. I just don't trust expertise, but that's me. I don't deal with them every day, but so I don't know what Ed and Lily think, but. I just, I think there's better companies out there, but that's me.
If you ever have feedback.
I've reached out, reached out to some other billing companies and we have like seventy-five percent Medicare, Medicaid in our. The residents in our community have seventy-five percent Medicare, Medicaid. And a lot of them don't want, the billing companies don't want to touch it. So I've had calls in the late west and a bunch of them, they just don't respond back. I don't know if that's a, a trade that's going to continue going on as we, we move forward, but. There's got to be an answer somewhere along the line. Uh, what are we missing? We should be, we can't just keep beating the same drum and trying to pass and go, or we gotta make, go forward somehow.
So. I've never ridden in a, oh, you know, thank God. So I don't know how it works. So if somebody needs an ambulance, um, they call you, they can do whatever. Let's say it's taking St. Elizabeth's, uh, then you send a bill to that person, you send it to, what, what happens?
So how that works is we, we transport the person to, well, they can go pretty much anywhere they want to within. Their grade of care that they need. So most of the time they end up going, it's being in some emergency, they need to go to St. Elizabeth's. For quick care. Um, once we transport there, we'll go back. for quick care. Um, once we transport there, we'll go back to make our charts. Um, we'll go through the charts, add the miles, all this other stuff to it. And we'll send it out to Expertise. They actually um add the numbers to the chart of what needs to be billed out and then they bill it out. They try to recapture whatever they can recapture. Typically, right now Medicare Medicaid will forty to fifty percent. So very minimal, you can charge whatever you want. Um, they got a number locked in that that's all you're going to get.
So that that bill go, when Expertise sends that, do they send the bill to the the patient or you?
Um, it goes to their insurance companies first.
Okay. And then the payment comes through Expertise back to the insurance.
I know this is new news, but I was just curious if there was anything, if you were anticipating or even hoping for anything in the Omnibus Health and Human Services bill, was there any legislative proposal for change? Because obviously, as you pointed out, this is not uniquely our problems. It's everywhere and I just didn't hadn't thought to look that up before this meeting. It just occurred to me.
I haven't seen any of them and all the sites I go on, but I think that's the issue. The issue is it's not being taken up at the federal level of rural healthcare and it's just it falls out the way. Um, but yeah, I don't, that's my opinion of it.
There is current surveys that are going on right now that are actually addressing the whole pay scale or will kick back to the ambulance services. But that's probably not going to be finished for a couple more years, two, two, three-year process. Fortunately, we'll be involved in some of that as well, so we have to do that at the end of the year.
So the direction I'm hearing is certainly continue to push on this billing thing, including outside billing entities and the township conversations with detailed proposals, more in the form of contracts than.
That's what I would propose. That's what they requested the next time we come back.
Yeah.
So I mean, I I'm happy to help that out if you want. Um, and we can look at the notes that I have to align that of what we discussed, but um, I that's my first two recommendations. Those you can kind of hopefully do fairly quickly in essence. But the other ones will be a little bit more challenging.
Any thoughts on the consultancy for business analysis? It's a complex problem.
Oh, I I uh I agree, we should uh we may not approach it right away and see where our townships come in. And all the cities are on it and then we can always look at it later and.
Learn more. Yeah, certainly keep us abreast of the references.
Would there be, I if once they took the references and openness, if I can get it fifty percent funded to to include it in the two thousand and twenty-two and just see what that looks like when we can take it out at fifteen?
I think so. I mean, when we have a we have a service that has a deficit planned, I don't think to sort of wait around to figure that out, so I I would be supportive of that.
Well, that's how it would work when, um, I had to go to San Francisco. Um, but I transferred to the ER and then you had to take me like to get some balance and transfer me. Um, how was how was that built off? And you did pay back fifty percent and for forty-five percent on your cost and then get another dollar?
It's.
Do we get nothing?
It's above fifty percent. I don't know if it's a magical number. Um, typically we do our running ports and that in Expertise and they they bill that all accordingly. I don't know if they bill for two or not. I don't know what they do at Lake City. Because it's actually two two ambulance runs. If we pick you up at your own and pay for that.
Because we'd be extra to those, right?
Yeah.
But that's why I'm getting at is if you guys did transfer to the ER and then transfer to the uh St. Mary's Hospital, are you still getting that? Forty percent? You are.
That's healthy. That's exactly right. This this billing thing is never going to suddenly make sense. It's, you know, yeah, you get reimbursed at a certain level regardless of your cost, regardless of the fact that people need service, yeah.
You gotta roll your.
Yeah, I mean, you do. And I think the other thing is do you push sending a bill to the patients to recover the remaining fifty percent? I mean, I think as we, your insurance works today, so we pay whatever the insurance does pay, so why are we giving them a free ride?
I don't know. Is there another speaking, um, is there like a possibility of doing like a revenue recapture?
Yeah, I mean, that's absolutely. So it's stuff I would look and do and I would assume our our billing company would do that, but it doesn't sound like.
It doesn't sound like, but they do the revenue recapture.
So I don't know. There's maybe something we're missing.
What's what's revenue recapture?
So basically they'll they'll gather, you have a outstanding bill to see Wabash or basically for our services, they'll grab all the state bond, state um refunds, federal refund, whatever they can grab.
Um, I mean, I'm not sure we go that far, but.
Yeah.
Um, but I do think we should bill the patients, so you know, it's wouldn't be any different than me going to get a lab done and the lab costs two hundred and my insurance company paid a hundred of it. That would have to be the other hundred. So why is the ambulance service any different?
It's I'd love. If you were willing to join that conversation next week, just make sure that we're asking the billing.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what it is.
Questions, yeah. I don't remember, but I think we'll send it eventually, yeah.
I think people would expect that.
Big challenge with no easy answers. So we appreciate the work. I really appreciate you digging in on this too, Caroline. We were talking about prioritization of issues and this one's very important, so. Thank you. Thanks to to Tim and I think John Friedmeyer has been assisting with some thoughts too. Do you want anything else called out of your report for action or consideration?
Thanks, Ed.
Good. All right. Thank you, Ed. All right. So we have a consent agenda with an additional item, which I if I remember was Wabash, uh, excuse me, St. Elizabeth's Community Foundation. It's a raffle, raffle, raffle. Okay, so we have Urban Arrow Gambling Premise Approval, the July warrants, the June first city council minutes, regular minutes, June twenty-third special city council minutes, Urban Arrow Liquor License, a chamber, a temporary liquor license for chamber, St. Elizabeth's Gambling License, Lost Dutchman Liquor License and Limited Use Permit for Municipal ID Entrance Sign. And I was just trying to remember what that was. Okay, that's related to Minna, uh, which updated the language in terms of its limited use permits. So it requires the existing LUPs between Minna and the city to be reissued.
I'll make more.
Was there something for St. Elizabeth's?
Yeah, yeah. St. Elizabeth's Raffle Permit?
Raffle Permit.
Oh, we met that one, right?
Yep.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a first from Dean, a second from Tim. Any further discussion? I was just going to say, thanks for these updates right to the agenda because then they're there for us to look at in the in real time. So if you're using a printed agenda from earlier in the week, uh, but you pull up the live city council meeting agenda, you will see in this very, very last minute that these additions are usually in there and that will probably prevent confusion like the confusion I created for poor Dean when when we added something last minute.
So I pulled it up today, but that wasn't the updated one.
It's there now, yeah.
There now.
It's there live, so, yeah, I mean, they have to add to the to the agenda management software, but at least you're not saying yes to something that you don't have in your hands. If you pull it up electronically, it's there. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose same sign. I'm so happy to be beyond roll votes for things like that. Public hearing on the USDA grant for public safety equipment. Um, so we would take any public comment on our intent as a city to apply for USDA rural grant funds. Not seeing any, but maybe we can hang on for any comment from Zoom. Okay, there we go. All right. So our first item of general business is approval of the USDA grant for public safety equipment. And as you recall, um, this is for facilities grant for snowplow police car equipment. These purchases will be in two thousand and twenty-two. Anything else you'd like to refresh us of?
Uh, yeah, I'm just going to share my screen with the audience here. Um, and then we'll just, let's see. Um, but but basically, um, there is a grant opportunity for equipment that can prepare us for any natural disasters. Um, these were planned expenses for two thousand and twenty-two that also helped prepare us for natural disasters. So I worked with um Tony and Joe on this um grant application. And um one is for a police car and the other is a snowplow truck replacement. Um, and so, um, yeah, the new, the plow truck is needed to replace a twenty-year-old plow truck. We'd be asked applying for approximately a hundred fourteen thousand dollars in grant funds. Um, and then would need to provide a matching cost share for both those items in the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two capital improvement fund for approximately two hundred eleven thousand dollars. Um, and we're hoping that that amount would come down, but we had to go in with kind of a high estimate. So seeking a motion to approve the grant application and required cost share. Again, it was in the existing CIP that was updated even as soon as two weeks ago. Um, and the final approvals and final approval of this would happen in two thousand and twenty-two.
So a candidate makes on on both shows?
Say that again?
Great. We have a motion from Bradley, a second from Tim. Any further discussion? Thanks for the work on that.
One vote.
We all take a vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
I oppose same sign. Very good. All right. And uh, we have a discussion uh for uh National Eagle Center use pay for use of City Eagle Center facility and including this in the new lease agreement. This was brought to my attention by Jeff. Jeff, do you want to outline your uh your proposal? We can talk about some of the details?
Yeah, the the Eagle Center hasn't, uh, you know, we've got that nice building down there on Nice Lot and uh they haven't paid any, they've had a lease where they haven't had to pay anything to use it. Um, since we're sticking all this money into it, maybe it's time that we can uh get a little bit into our budget from uh putting maybe, I'm proposing, maybe we put a uh a facility use fee on each paid admission to the NEC, you know, maybe five to ten percent, you know. This could go into the general fund, could be used to help fund the CIF and for any bonded service, you know, reducing the burden on taxpayers. And this would, if you if we did something that way, it would allow the Eagle Center to keep claiming as an asset rent-free use of the facility. Just just an example of that, in two thousand and eighteen, they they put about a million-dollar value on their books using as an asset for using the facility rent-free. Um, I talked to or I emailed the city attorney. He suggested if we wanted to do something like that, just give a, you know, he'd be willing to negotiate or try to get that into the lease agreement so that, you know, it could be considered by him. Um, I just, I think, you know, they did in two thousand and seventeen, they decided they wanted to pay five hundred thousand dollars for the development rights to the plaza and open space. Um, and they exercised those rights, but now they've decided they don't want to pay that. So this would at least uh give us some potential recouping of that. That's just something I'm throwing out there. I mean, I don't, I mean, we use, you we charge. I mean, user fees are used everywhere, you know, we uh we charge our our pool users get to have to pay a fee. Uh, we charge to use the park pavilions. We have a lodging tax. We charge the leased boat slips, we charge leased campground spaces. Um, I don't know. And then another issue too is, and if you look at the uh original two thousand and five agreement, um, I don't know if anybody knows this, but the city is responsible for any necessary repairs of the structural elements of the proposed buildings such as outer and supporting walls, foundations, roof and gutters. And I'm not sure Tony has a line item in his budget for NEC building maintenance. So this, that's another thing to be concerned, because I'm sure that'll be in the new agreements. So we should, I I just think we should allow the uh city attorney to uh look into, and also one more thing too, our city charter allows us to do this. We have a system of taxation that says, subject to the state constitution, except as forbidden by or state law, the council shall have full authority and power to provide by ordinance for a system of local taxation. This authority includes the power by ordinance to assess levy and collect taxes on all subjects or objects of taxation except as limited or prohibited by the state constitution, by this charter or by laws, blah, blah, blah. You know, our lawyer could look in to see if that's any problems with that. But I think this would be almost like a win-win. The Eagle Center could still keep their, you know, claiming as a rent-free use, whereas in the city could put a user fee on the admission tickets.
Can you correct me on what you said about the city's uh uh responsibility for the building?
Yeah, this is from the two thousand uh five agreement, which is we just they just amended, you know, when we do these other ones, it says maintenance modification of premises by Eagle. It says, the city shall be responsible for any necessary repairs of the structural elements of the proposed building such as outer and supporting walls, foundations, roof, gutters, and shall make those repairs at its expense. So that's.
With with that, I think you go with the argument, um. I don't remember that, but that's in there. We don't have a line item for that.
No, and we don't do it, to my knowledge.
Well, it's a new building, so it probably hasn't been.
Well, they just had a window that was a huge piece of the window was replaced. I don't remember seeing that come through in our warrant. So they they are not currently relying on us for that maintenance, to my knowledge. Now, structural damages is probably a different issue. Maybe that's why that was outlined that way, but I think that's something to revisit in the terms of the new agreement. Um, I did a little work on this. I did contact Mike too, to so I'm clear on his intent. He cannot be here with us this evening. What Mike cannot do is come up with terms for us. He he is not going to negotiate terms, so he can only act on a policy decision that we would make. So just so that we're clear, we can't sort of say we think it's a good idea and expect that Mike will do that work. We would have to come up with the terms that we would expect him to try and negotiate into that agreement. Second, and this will be in the lease agreement, um, he did not speak about taxation, which of course these are, this is a tax-exempt entity. We didn't give them a pass on this. They're a nonprofit. They're tax exempt by the state. So he talked about a lease, uh, you know, a lease. Since we have a lease agreement, he said, you know, I think it's within your right as a city to have a lease arrangement. He didn't speak to the value of that. That's not his call. He just said legally, he understands that we would have that authority. Um, I looked into it about, you know, because obviously nonprofits make up a large part of land use in every city and I thought, well, are we unique? We don't appear to be unique. Um, there was a Bloomberg City Lab report that said, um, that Minnesota, you know, this is an issue in other cities. In some cases, cities have a significant amount of land use in the university towns where there's a ton of land use that's nonprofit. Um, Pittsburgh was given as an as an example. But in Minnesota, um, a Lincoln Institute of Land Policy Studies, the twenty twenty, twenty-ten study found that, you know, these kind of arrangements are often haphazard, secretive and calculated. And then add not really keen on that. I think if we're talking about this one nonprofit, we have to be a little bit broader in our understanding of the issue, but um they also report taxes. As currently structured and administered in most cities, simply do not deliver anything resembling the amount of revenue lost to nonprofits' property tax exemption. So I just want to be talking about, you know, are we talking about making up for a tax exemption because this is a valuable property? Um, if it is, you know, that's really the terms of the development. That's how we address that. Um, from a lease standpoint, you know, we believe that there's some lease um value to the use of the building. I would just, I would just remind us that, you know, the the fundamental philanthropy that came to uh results in the Eagle Center today wasn't a city's philanthropic effort. It was the Eagle Center's philanthropic effort primarily. So they do occupy the nicest building that's, you know, city property, but they made it possible. You know, we didn't build, for instance, a big civic center that we're now leasing to, you know, youth, sports, athletics entities. That would be kind of a different animal in my mind. So, um, so I'm just, you know, kind of, I guess outlining what my kind of, you know, framework of understanding the issue is, um, just for the purpose of discussion.
This is coming up before. Here, Halliday brought it up one time. And we talked to some members of the Eagle Watch Board. Um, we're trying to think, the city, the city property, city they city threw in six hundred thousand or something like that when the building was set up. It's a small amount to the six million, whatever it costs, but it was something. Um, so we we looked at, you know, can we recover any of those expenses? There's something that the city's citizens will give back from this. So at the time, we talked about maybe we give free admission for schoolchildren, one or eighteen, that are city residents. Uh, and then everyone anywhere, but now we're sitting here. And then everyone anywhere, but now we're sitting here after, what, fourteen years. We have this building there, and now there's four, five other buildings on Main Street. So we're losing some tax revenue. The buildings on Main Street probably not a whole lot of tax revenue that way, but for even the Eagle Center, maybe not a whole lot of tax revenue, but it's something. So we're losing something, and, and they're built, they do bring in, you know, eighty thousand visitors a year, whatever. Not everybody goes out and buys a hamburger as soon as they leave the Eagle Center, a lot of them just go back in their car and go. So we probably, I think we're, we're justified in, in trying to recover some of the costs that we have. And we're not getting any taxes for on those properties. You can compare them to other nonprofits, if we look at churches, this is a big one. Churches still are heavily involved in the community, the community members are heavily involved in the churches, so that's an integral thing. With the Eagle Center, it's not so much, we have members on the Eagle Watch Board, I was on the Eagle Watch Board for five years. And everybody's done something to help the Eagle Watch, and a lot of people have done it, but it's not such the same as the church. So I think this, the Eagle Watches and Eagle Centers. More like a business, and they're occupying one of our buildings, and they're occupying space in our. Traditional downtown district, our central business district downtown, so. I think would be nice if we could get some money back from that. And so I kind of like your idea, Jeff. You know, we can put a user fee or whatever you call it. On that, they can still preserve their. Their status. But I think we need to, I'm in favor of recovering some type of money from the Eagle Center. Just to, just to counteract the fact. City property, you know, let's, people use city property without a cost. And they're not paying taxes. And so it's a, it's a cost to us, and if you, as you pointed out, we have. A responsibility to keep the building maintained, we have large structure maintenance. That can be a problem.
Well, the, the thing that's, another thing would be nice of, of a facility use fee is that the people using the facility are paying for it. You know, and this is something I found on Wikipedia, about the, the old Vikings Stadium in Minneapolis. Every, every ticket to a Vikings game, there's a nine point five percent fee added to that ticket that went to the. The public entity that owned the building, so it's not unusual for a facility fee to be charged to admission to a building.
Except that's kind of an extreme example, well, but I mean, just in a business model sense, I guess, I'm not disparaging it, but it's more, more extreme in terms of what, what their business probably will. Will bear, so, so again, you know, again, I got to return to what, what Mike said in his inability to kind of guide this conversation. And that is that he understands us to have the ability to make a lease agreement and to have some fee associated with that lease. We did not discuss, and maybe he did the few, Jeff, you know, the ability, our, our right to add a fee. And if so, you know, where does that, where is that negotiated? Because it is, you know, you're, you're, you know, it's being implemented on their, on their users. So I mean, certainly, the Eagle Center would have to say whether their, their business model can bear that.
Well, I mean, it's fifty cents on a ten dollar admission ticket, okay?
Yeah.
You know.
I know, but we're not, we're not that bored, you know, we're not that bored.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, but they would not make that decision lightly.
And you know, they're going to raise, after this project's completed, you know, it's not going to stay a ten dollar admission. They will raise their prices because they're offering so much more, so if they're allowed to raise their prices, why can't we recoup something?
So I don't know how to handle that as it relates to our agreements that are going to be coming to us, that would be something Mike would have to guide us on. I don't, I was prepared to kind of think about, does this have an impact, yes or no, on these agreements, which we hope to see in the context of a special meeting? It sounds like what your, your primary proposal would be is not that, it's not a specific lease agreement, right? So it's something we'd have to.
If they gave us, I would, I wouldn't mind getting fifty grand a year for a lease agreement, in the lease agreement. I'd be, I'd be happy with that. In ten years, that would be paying back the five hundred thousand that was offered previously for the plaza improvements or, or development.
So I think that would frustrate the Eagle Center, since they've outlined, you know, the, the, the proposal they've made is, and we need to be clear on this. Is that they are raising additional money in their philanthropic endeavor to cover some of the costs that exceeded. The planned costs of the public element, which was the city's responsibility. So we're going to have to be patient and listen to that again if we make this proposal, otherwise we're going to seem like we're not paying attention. Because that's been outlined for us over and over again, and it seems like we keep wanting somehow for this five hundred thousand dollars to show up, but.
It's not fair.
Okay, well, I'm sure they'll make that argument again, but, but we, we do have costs that exceed.
There's, there's, yeah, they're talking about that, they, we were going to make improvements to Big Joe Alley, and that was going to be the city's portion of it. And so now, I, I think that they're saying they're going to pick up the Big Joe Alley thing as part of that, the four million that they're getting from the state.
So they're not really paying for it, they're just, they just allocated bonding money.
But they have to raise the additional mon- monies that are not there to cover the costs that we're not budgeting.
But they're saying, so, but that covers the five hundred thousand that kind of went away, so I'm thinking, well.
Well, it didn't in my mind, I mean, we can, you can, well, you can go home and watch that on YouTube if you want to revisit it, but, you know, I think these are, these are, these are. I mean, a fifty thousand dollar lease agreement is a really big wrench to throw into this at this current moment. We, those bond funds are dependent upon these agreements being made, I'll just, I'll just characterize it that. The other piece I would say is, again, I'm not hearing this from constituents. I, I, I understand that it's been a discussion that's longstanding.
Most people don't even know that the city owns that building and property.
I don't think that's true, but.
Met a lot of people at the city, you tell them, because I, you know, they don't know that this Eagles, they think the Eagle Center owns it.
The community members who are giving in the tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars know, they know that it's owned by the city, they know. And so that would be the other, the other benchmark, I would say, of the, of the community's investment in this, is, is private monies, I mean, significant private monies. Going to an entity that, again, no private, no private benefactor can enjoy the gift of, a gift of that magnitude. So, you know, the, the, for me, the hallmark is the tremendous community support that's gone into this project. And I, I will, you know, I'll do my homework, but I would not want to be toned up to that, that significant, you know. Investment of, of community members and make it look like the city's trying to, you know, manage our budget, which is our responsibility. But I'd be, I would be very careful in, in making that leap to assume that everybody wants to, some of the tax revenue back.
Payment in lieu of taxes, I think, has been established since the seventy thirties. And Waukesha County used to get payments from the D N R for one, remember, the, on the D N R land that's within Waukesha County. So I don't think it's unusual to ask for payments in lieu of taxes, now the amount. I'm not so, I, I don't know that, how much money we, we really should get, try and recover the five hundred thousand, I think we're recovering some of it already, but not the whole. So if it's less than five, fifty thousand.
Something.
You know, yeah, I just think something would be.
And excuse me, a thirty year lease too, something, isn't it?
The city's get some type of payback or removal of the tax product.
When we had the meeting where we approved, I think it was the bonding agreement, so if we can actually begin. I actually threw out a bunch of suggestions during the meeting, one of which was very similar to. You know, because I, I understand the whole five hundred thousand dollar bond allocation. Which actually ended up being four hundred thousand, so, you know, I suggested to make up for that hundred thousand, we do some kind of lease or use fee. Even if it's a deferment. What I don't want to do is, is throw any wrenches in this project anymore. I want to get this part done, I want to get. I want to get the facility working, but I do agree with these guys about the use fee. So my idea would be to create some kind of deferment. If we're, if this project can be completed in five years, let's get it done, and then maybe we can have something that kicks in after a certain amount of time. Where the facility fee starts coming in. Just so it's not, I, I can't sit through that speech again for the.
I'm hoping somebody else doesn't want to sit through it.
About.
I've been taking notes every day.
This money, you know, we've heard it too many times already. So, I mean, because if it's an immediate thing, it's going to be a problem, I know it is. And, and I don't want to stay on it, I don't want to, I don't want to crash this project. So what I'm thinking is, if we do propose something, let's, let's defer it five years down the road. Say let's, you know, use your money, get this project finished, once it's done and things are up and running. After five years, or I'm just throwing, that's a magic number I'm throwing out, then, you know, we're going to start collecting. Facility fees at that point, so that's the only suggestion I had thought of.
That, I, I can live with that, as long as there's, we have, there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
Right, right, and if we're entering this long lease agreement, it's got to be in there now, we can't wait to do it, so. But I like the idea of giving them time to finish this big step without having one more expense to worry about. So then, you know, we pick a date when things are rolling, that's when it starts.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I don't know what kind of a motion to make.
So we would need to make a motion that has action so that those negotiations can actually occur. So as I mentioned, Mike can't sort of listen to the minutes of this, read the minutes of this meeting and get his idea of what he thinks that's worth, and then kind of come up with terms. He would need us to specify those terms, and this, and the Eagle Center would, of course, need to respond to those terms. So what we say tonight is a proposal that works its way into the agreements that then would be getting negotiated, but Mike can't come up with the terms for us.
Sure.
I would feel more comfortable, give him this for next month, so I can talk to our, our citizens and give feedback on the whole idea.
Yeah, if we get to come up with certain terms, as in a dollar amount too. We should put some thought into that as well.
So I would absolutely generously welcome that if we didn't think we were going to have these agreements done before our next regular city council meeting. And that is my hope, that the attorneys have been working in earnest, we keep getting updates from Mike, that they're close. I will also say, you know. We've had so much discussion about this, and again, we have great, excellent coverage by our local press. I mean, if you're hearing an outcry that I'm not hearing, please let me know. But we have talked about this quite a bit, quite openly, I remember your suggestions, Brian, I remember the specificity of it. So, you know, our responsibility right now is, this isn't their project, this is our project, this is a bonded project for the city of Waukesha. And I would just be cautious that we not, at this, sort of, do this Monday morning quarterback move to try to get tax. Revenue sort of replacement, when really, this is a huge effort that has, you know, involved, I don't, I mean, decades of, decades of effort. That's my, that's where my hesitation comes from, is that we not become, you know, sort of opportunistic at the last moment, because we, we got to, you know, we got to do our part on this project. This isn't their project, that they're asking for our permission and they expect to do very well monetarily by. And the other thing I would say is, you know, we've had a call from our league and other entities to be very, very, very conscientious what businesses have gone through COVID. And so, yes, this is a nonprofit business, but they have been subject to the most strict of closures like restaurants and other hospitality. They have been closed or partially closed for the better part of a season, and that's. That's a rough moment to tell somebody we'd like to recoup some money from this whole effort, that's, that is. That's a bold proposal, I got to say, you know, if it's deferred, I guess that takes the heat off, but it's still. Is a proposal being made in a period where we're not even, I mean, when, when are they allowed to go to full occupancy, like, a month ago? You know, and just, that's my, I just, I just, it doesn't feel ethical to me to do that, but. But I understand the pragmatics of it, and I know that those who've sat on council for a long time would like to see there be a return. In my research, it doesn't look like that's widely successful, you know, as an example, you know, Pittsburgh is a big university town, they have, it's very rational, right? For a council to say, we've got all this university, all this university property that's nonprofit, and all these students that are benefiting from all this public, you know, municipal works. Let's get some money out of that, well, they just, I mean, they were met with just rebellion, because those universities bring a tremendous amount of, of assets. They're not, they don't just suck on municipal services. When I looked at whether it's done in Minnesota, it, it said it's rarely, rarely done. When we asked Mike to comment whether, whether it was legal, he said it's legal, but it's just not done much in Minnesota or something.
Well, the Eagle Center is open from ten to five. You know, and then. So we, we don't have students staying home, right, we don't, we don't have permanent people coming.
Right, right, it's an extreme example, I'm, I'm just trying to do my research about, you know, what, what can we really expect, because.
I still think, yeah, I would like to see, I understand that, yeah, we're right in the middle of this thing, and they're trying to wrap it up, and so. This is, this would probably be throwing a wrench into that. But I would like to come out of this knowing that we're going to have some type of discussion or agreement or deferment of, of this thing. You know, and, yeah, for us to decide an amount is going to be difficult, you know, we don't want to do that now, I don't think.
Oh, well, just the user fee add approach still seems the most easiest to do. I mean, because the, the actual user facility, you know, the tourists that come through, they're actually the ones that are paying for it.
Yeah.
If the Eagle Center's not paying for it, you know, it's. And, and that, you could probably get some line, Mike could probably get some language in there to negotiate that to go into effect when the project's completed or something. It doesn't have to go into effect tomorrow.
So are you comfortable with that proposal being tabled and further investigated? Even if our agreement language comes to us, you know, next two, three weeks?
I don't think we should have, we need to have some kind of language in the agreement that allows us to negotiate that down the road or something.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that, can we, can we instruct Mike to put a, like a clause, just saying after five years, the city has the right to try to negotiate. Like, like user fee slash lease type of thing.
Yeah, something like that.
So then it's not a commitment, it's not a settlement.
And it does need to be five years when the project's completed, or a year.
Right, or a year after completion or something like that. That, that seems, because then, then we do have time to like actually think of the.
And they would have a chance to see what their, how the business model is either good or, good or bad.
Right.
And it's, yeah, it's a recovery from.
Yeah, and if they're struggling, maybe that current council decides they're not going to implement it.
I'd be happy with that language, just saying that, you know, that. That there's a clause in there to, you know, negotiate that.
Yeah.
At, you know, a year af- after, when the project's completed, you negotiate it, and a year after it goes into effect, or something like that. Could direct Mike, Mike to run that by the Eagle Center.
Oh, it's Caroline's spoken to Mike separately from me.
Yeah, no, not today though.
Okay.
Um, yeah, he. I think they're pretty far along, but I need some specificity, so it would be twelve months after. Completion of phase one and phase two of the project, the city shall have the right to negotiate. Are we calling it?
A lease amount or a facility.
Or a user fee or something to that.
Facility fee or, yeah. I can.
It's the best we can go forward with, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah.
I think we should formalize that as a motion, so Mike knows he's got, he's got council's. Agreement, because of course, he doesn't act on behalf of any one of us individually, so you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll sign.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, same sign, nay. Okay, thanks, that's, I appreciate everybody's, we're in a level-headedness about that, I think we all, we all have the same goal in mind, I know we do. But these are important discussion points, okay? Alright. So Charter Commission, this is kind of one of those similar issues, I know Dean has done a lot of work thinking about this over time. And I think Caroline too has, has appraised the league that we would potentially be interested in revisiting its charter. As you probably all know, but for the public's benefit, a charter commission is typically made up of voters who are not members of council or the mayor, although in my reading of the league's guidance, it can be members of council or the mayor. Staffed by city clerk and may involve legal counsel and probably significant time, is what Mike has kind of just casually instructed Dean and I. So the purpose of the commission would be to review City of Waukesha's charter and make needed updates, they may involve time and additional legal and staff work. Do you have updates for us, I know you had consulted league guidance.
I did, and I just found an old email, and it looks like the league charges a hundred dollars an hour. And then I'm not sure, I need to find out what my clarity would charge, but, and I did get a chance to speak to somebody who was involved with one. And, you know, to economize consultancy fees, staff might prepare the changes and review the charter. And then the attorneys are just there to say, yeah, that's legal, which is how we do a lot, but.
There's a lot to it, and to make it easy, I would say, Full Lake City's Charter, copy and paste it.
We're thinking the same, I did a total, like, comparative.
The reason this came up is, for one, when I moved from third word to first word, there was confusion as to whether I should be back or not. I don't know, whoever's did specify that.
Silent term.
In the past, there's been discussions about, the board system, or we should get rid of it.
Um, in the past, there's been discussions about the ward system, or we should get rid of it, and do all all that large or keep it. With one person per ward, and then the rest of the large or keep it as is, um, there's no language in our charter right now about. Administrator or finance director, um, and uh, um, when Darren Rambler office, uh, uh. You know, there is, it was very vague on that, uh, Jeff brought up was. Um, if you're a full time employee, you can, you have to see council, but what about part time? Our charter doesn't talk about that, I don't have a problem with part timers, um, uh, serving in council, I think they should. Um, so that would eliminate our government or EMS, um, or part time.
Public works employees.
Public works employees, hopefully fine, we got a lot of good people out there that, to be honest, um, uh, other things, uh, it talks about, like, for. Talks about the franchise agreements, for example, um, uh, they can be no longer than twenty years long. Um, I think we just did a franchise agreement for a few years. Um, something like that, they wanted forty years, something like that, um, I think that language is very, very important. Um, to put it in the chart, um, and I think we can get this done. Very real cost, I mean, of course, we're gonna have to have to turn this over and go on, um, believing that so the city does offer, as Carolyn said, uh, uh. Hundred dollars an hour, consulting fee, they do it all the time. At many examples of tours, and uh, uh, in twenty seventeen, Mayor Hall, Al Wharton, and Chad worked on this for a while. For some reason it got dropped, I'm not sure why, um, just probably too much went on or something, but every year I've been on the council, I mean, out of year to year. Term I've been on the council, uh, which are many, um, this has always come up, we should check or, or we should look at it and fix this and so forth and so on. And what's nice, what I like about it is. Uh, Grand Lake City is kind of fixed it, and yet we still have to have, uh, citizen feedback and participation. In the whole system, and that's the work, um, so I can. We can't be accused of saying, well. We didn't know about that stuff, um, so I would urge everyone to search. Uh, uh. The process. And uh, where we, where that is, and I'm sure talking to our attorneys and stuff, I know. I can process that, because we have to take this court, um, is one aspect of it, and the judge actually has a say in this too. Uh, and he has a statement of all time afterwards, prior to, uh, they're going to vote, um, so there's, there's a lot of.
Is it vote by the city council?
No, there's a handbook chapter on it, and this is the part I was gonna call Dean about, and I thought, well, it's beneficial. For all of us too, is the constitution of the of the of the charter commission, really, it's it's in perpetu- in perpetuity, so my question was, you know, what happened to the former charter commission? Because it probably didn't include Chad, since he was a small child when it was issued, um, so what happened to that, and is that still in place, and are there members of that charter commission who are still willing and would be legally obligated to serve? Because as I understand it, it's, that's your perpetual responsibility, but the um, the, I did exactly what you did, Dean, I looked at Lake City, they're such a comparable and familiar city, they have some of the exact same language as we do. Um, you know, one of the sentiments is about special elections, you know, you're creating unnecessarily creating reason for special elections, which is burdensome and does not necessarily advantage the voter. And our ward system may, you could potentially argue does that, um, but you know, the other piece that the league, um, calls out in their handbook, and I I would urge anybody to read that chapter, just so you could come up with additional questions. Um, is that their services are capped at a thousand dollars, so there's, they're only gonna go so far for us, yeah.
Right, and then the other thing that I like too is, let's say, council will tie it down. Well, the citizens' law check in. Requires to do it by ten percent. To ensure petition of the previous election, um, and I think it needs to be done. Uh, there's, there's, our charter is so small, and you're saying. And vague, if you look at the city, like, cities like fifteen, only pages one, um, it has twenty three pages. So.
Yeah, ours is great, and it doesn't bind us to a lot until we get to someplace where it's really important to know what the detail is and it's unclear what the intent is, so there's a beauty in it being short.
Example of that franchise agreement, uh, with that permission, they can only be twenty years a period. That way we don't have to worry about. Somebody coming in and out around forty five years, and I didn't know that. We could do that, actually have that in the charter.
Do we need action to have this work begin in terms of?
Do you have any idea what this will cost?
Well, the league says they cap it at a thousand, so I don't know if they're accustomed to, you know, ten hours of work getting cities mostly where they need to be, I would guess most people don't rewrite their charter entirely, and we maybe pick and choose from. Lake City or their comparable cities where we think there's, you know, useful language, but there is a procedural element to it, and that too, I don't know how much our attorneys would need to be involved to handle the. The work with the. With the court to establish this, it's not, we don't get to just decide who this is composed of, I think if. The court doesn't do it, then we have that authority.
Another, I think our city charter itself defines what, who can be on a charter commission, if you have the.
Maybe it does, I thought I had the whole thing that kinda memorized it.
I think it says you can't, can't be members of council, the mayor, or any other members of any other commissions.
Well, the league is very. Clear that.
You can.
There is a way that comp can be.
Yeah, but our city charter, which we're operating when.
Right.
You can't, just because the league says so, you gotta go by what our charter says.
Right, yes, and uh, I don't, I don't suspect that any other council people really want to be on that charter. Um, uh, I would recommend that. Um, we come up with names, I already have two names, but ultimately it's up to the judge to appoint those individuals. Um, they have to, 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 work in participant, and they have to. Uh, they they need to be appointed this morning, and to go to office that they want to here, um, it's very. It's very, uh, uh.
Significant responsibility.
And what what happened or last charter commission, I'm not sure, um, I think they're probably all passed away right now, um. Uh, and I have no finding in names, who they were, um, but that was, that's where the judge would have.
They take record.
Right.
You can sleep well at night knowing that our charter does restrict. Um. Franchise beyond twenty five years, at least we have that. All right, so do you think we need formal action, or we just pursue this and?
Yeah, the only other recommendation I got talking to someone, and it is helpful to maybe have former. Mayors or council members involved, they have a history of the community.
And understanding of.
So I will just look into next steps in terms of the formation of the commission, and then to address the cost question. Hopefully there's minimal cost in forming it, and then we can approve, um, attorney's fees on an ad hoc basis.
Great, thank you, so back to Tim's preview of this item, the planning commission had a June fifteenth, I think, meeting. And we have a a staff update from our planner, Harry Davis, um, what would you like us to know from, it's an extensive staff report, would you like us to know from that?
Yeah, so, you know, we talked about two means to go to city council, I believe, but updating our comp plan to include, um, certain items that we're actively working on today, pursuing, uh, and those items. Are really the three that are in the package here, so the Eagle Center project, um, River Revitalization project, the, um, Barge Terminal project, as well as the rerouting of Highway sixteen. And partly we updated the comp plan now to include all this, given we have the information, and uh. B, I know we were under kind of the gun to potentially apply for other grants or other. Uh, monies per se, and um, this kind of helps ensure that we kind of take that next step into that realm. So we add a few items regarding the the Eagle, the the river project, and the highway. Sixty reroute project as well as the Barge Terminal, so as, I'm not gonna go through each and every one of these, um, but that's in essence what we did, so. Obviously, it doesn't set us in stone as far as like redoing the land use maps and stuff like that, although there are examples in there. Um, but we always can revisit them when the projects are coming up, um, for reviewing stuff like this, this is much more to help kind of guide us, um, as a city council, as a city to move forward with this. And then as we move forward with. Um, the year and next year, we'll probably do a much deeper dive into the comp plan, as far as looking at each section, updating the data, updating other projects and so on, so this is just kind of the first step.
Right, that was gonna be my question to you, I was really starting out to be at that meeting, um. This will be, we'll, we can hang on to this document as a reference until those larger comp plan changes are made, or will they incrementally update the comp?
Um, well, we haven't really decided, do we want faculty one, and then just update it as a grand project, I think we need to still talk a little bit about that, my opinion would be a faculty section and then. Approve it as one comp plan.
That makes sense.
But these additions, we wanted to get in there due to, you know, some of the legislation, financial reasons or something like that, so. Um, it just that kind of supports the three projects we have going on, or the big three anyways, um, and and kind of that well, so that's why we update this part right now, um. And I think we'll tackle each section or each thing as we move forward, and it, I would like to do it as one grand, uh, plan, just kind of that well, so. Um, I don't think we've really kind of fully discussed it, but I think that's what Carrie's kind of thinking about, so. But I know some of it is also budgeting, we wanna make sure we don't. We have the planner that can do it and stuff like that, so that's why I think someone's will run it in next year, like, we'll, we'll tackle that.
Okay.
So could I just ask a question?
Please.
So there came up that, uh. The proposal that changes so many covered portion of corners.
Yep, we know that.
Yeah, and so, uh, is it a movement to move, we put all corners properly?
So we discussed it a little bit, Jeff, refresh my memory, I think this was just used as a guide, um, because we would have to do probably formal public hearing on rezoning that portion, and. What portion are we gonna do and stuff like this, I think we were just using this much more. Kind of as a guide for right now, and to really finalize what we're gonna do at, when they come up for a CUP or whatever type of project they're gonna come up with. So the Barge Terminal will have to be talk about land use, will have to rezone that, do we wanna spot zone it, you know, there's still a lot of questions about that, and what is being proposed? Again, we don't have a per se proposal, um, so I think that's why we just left it as kind of a framework for what we're gonna have. So that's kind of why it might not include all the property.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what we were thinking.
What you're thinking. You should, you should at least have a proposal from the corners for what they want to use.
Absolutely, I think there will be a, probably a conditioning is permanent on that, at least the Barge Terminal, I'm guessing, at which that would include redoing the, um. The land use, redoing a bunch of other plans we have, and then whatever the rest of the condition would be coming for, so. I would assume we would treat the Heavy sixty project very similar to that, who probably have to be sold that, or and stuff like that, so that's kind of what we're thinking.
Okay, any other? Confusion, I don't know who was at that meeting, it kind of, it was well attended, um, so we have a lot of whereas statements, including that the planning commission met and conducted a public hearing. And then we have a resolution before us, um. To include in our conference of plan, the port facility. The, um. I should have highlighted these, the, uh, Wabashaw waterfront revitalization. And the Highway sixteen realignment. Anybody care to make a motion to?
Make the.
Effectualize this motion, thanks, we have a first by Jeff, we have a second by Dean, any further discussion? Like I kind of alluded to, if you would just save this as a good reference document, I think, to have saved somewhere convenient as we move forward, just to keep yourself appraised of. Um, you know, these priorities as we seek funding. For them and public input, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion prevails, okay. Just gets a little, my computer gets a little sleepy here at the end, all right, um, we have now the resolution, no, excuse me, um, the. Authorization for twenty seven hundred and fifty dollars in attorney's fees to review cable franchise agreement renewal, Caroline's done some work on this, and give us, given us a staff report?
Um, just to be clear, I'm open either way, if we wanna authorize this or do an internal. Review, it is a ten year agreement, so for me, kind of thinking about ten years, that seems significant. Um, and the, we've been, haven't had issues with our cable franchise operator, um, they've been paying monthly on time three percent of their, um, annual subscriber revenue. So that's been a nice line item that we've had in the budget. Um, and there haven't been complaints, the only thing that I noted is that Mayor Duran sent me some recent legislation a couple of years ago. There was a ruling that allows. Cable, uh, franchises to renegotiate lower fees with cities, and the one thing that I noticed in the proposed agreement. Is that there is some language that says it's going to be three percent, but the way it was phrased. Um. Sounded to me that, you know, that it opened it up to at some point being lower than three percent, so it said initially. Grantee will play franchising authority and annual fran- franchise fee in the amount of three percent of grantee's annual growth revenues, that's. Um, midco. Any subsequent change in the franchise fee by the franchising authority requires a minimum ninety day notice to the grantee, so it's saying that they, to me, I read this, that they could change their fee. Simply with a ninety day notice to us, um, and it says initially, so. That's kind of what I identified, and that, you know, cancellation, revoke termination, um, has to be a breach of contract, and so we couldn't. The way this reads, if they're offering a lower fee and we think we could get it. From somebody else, we have to show a breach of contract, so does that warrant me going back to them and just having. You know, stronger language myself, or do we want to involve a professional, I contacted Mike Clarity, and he said. This is a federal area of law, and so he recommended this Riley Law LLC. Who said I could read it, it would take me about ten hours, and then you could go then do the negotiations, he would highlight everything and then we would go to the negotiations. Otherwise, again, I could go to them and see if we can just say they will pay three year, three percent over the next ten years and see where that get gets us, um. And then I also thought that, um. That, you know, together with a council member, we could just try to review the rest of it and just, you know, so. I am okay either way, the other thing that the attorney brought up is that potentially we can negotiate for additional funds for our public access channel. But that would be come another user fee on cable providers, and it just seems like that would be challenging as well.
Anybody feel strongly about seeking some additional legal consultation at our expense to, uh. Follow this up?
Just. Wait, Carolyn said this, uh. Change it to three percent.
Or say if they wanna change it, it has to be approved by the city as well, and not just them arbitrarily deciding. Because then we can say, well, why, and if they're like, we're going big, all right, we'll go to two. But at least it gives us. Authority to. Say no.
Is that satisfactory for? Guys, and this will come back to us then.
Mm-hmm.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, then we have a discussion on a draft proposal for the American Rescue Act funds and citizen participation, Caroline also. Previewed this a little bit, um, as I'm sure you guys read in the memo, we have, um. Uh, the outline of what funds, the allowable use of funds, um, and some priorities for our water and sewer, and I will thank Pat when this first was kind of forecasted, that this relief might be coming our way, he was the first to respond, he was very. Clear that there were some important needs. So, um, there's approximately a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in costs there, and then this other aspect of, but you know, trying to alleviate negative economic impacts, I'm gonna let Caroline speak to that, because that's her specialty.
Yeah, I mean, there are limited categories, and we're still waiting for guidance, but I feel pretty confident that what I'm proposing is eligible. Um, but just wanna talk about process, because we have three years, we don't have to make a decision now, I do feel that the water sewer computer system placement, we should. Approve now, um, and then. The lost revenue replacement, Tyler estimated this past year, we're only eligible for only twenty thousand dollars, according to their calculation, we only lost twenty thousand dollars of revenue, which is interesting to me. Um, but I budgeted forty five thousand, because we can calculate it for the next three years, so that would give us some room. Childcare and small grants to small businesses, we could also include nonprofit organizations, I've included some funding there. Um, small grants to childcare businesses and small grants to small businesses, in an email conversation, um, Jeff and I had, we we, there's not as much flexibility. Coming from the COVID relief, so I thought we could supplement that with our own funds, that if a business such. That if a business such as, um, you know, any business wants to create some outdoor dining patio, that they could come through this fund and we would still manage it through the Port Authority, but it would be your authority. And then I did include the sixty-four hundred dollars for the proposal we heard earlier today. Um, I do believe that online bill pay and electronic time cards would be very beneficial for the city. Um, so it's about forty-six hundred dollars to do um upgrades to do online bill pay and electronic time cards. And that leaves us thirty thousand dollars not committed, and that's where I would recommend maybe seeing I didn't see that this is eligible, but I could investigate it, could we fund, you know, part of the ambulance analysis, because hypothetically a healthy ambulance service is gonna help us respond to the next pandemic, and the ambulance service definitely also suffered during the pandemic in terms of revenue losses. Um, but that is not explicit, and the other thing worth noting is that there was some opportunity, I think, for essential workers, but they would need to, we could only pay for direct COVID nineteen patients um working with them, so, you know, in terms of police or fire EMS, you'd be needing a time card that said I spent one hour with a COVID a patient, which didn't seem reasonable, so that's how I came up with this, and then I think the feedback for you all is that I've heard that you would like more public engagement, so how would you like to see this approached? Do you like this plan? Would we publish the draft plan out there and solicit comments, hold a public hearing, um, reach out to stakeholders on this, um? You know, in terms of what I think the public is gonna be interested, probably less interested in lost revenue replacement, or maybe seeing the merits of a water sewer computer system upgrade, but certainly there there would be, we've already heard there's interest in small grants to small businesses, so I I didn't know, would we just be hearing the same comments? What I don't know a lot about is the childcare businesses, that's still needs research.
Didn't Pat have some more uh utility hardware one of the upgrade and console stuff too that were
There's something at every meeting.
Every day, he's probably got something for us every day.
Yeah. Well, the wealth one rehab was a
Yeah, the problem is that we'd have to eliminate something else, and then it's just like very small change to the magnitude of the four hundred thousand dollar project. So it, when we calculated it, it didn't have an an important uh impact on taxpayers. Whereas I feel that a small grant to a small business has a potential to really help that business out, or a childcare organization. Um, the other thing too is since it's flexible, we could see the demand for grant programs, and then, you know, if it's not utilized, then go back with another proposal that is an emerging need in two years or something, so.
I really appreciate this work. I know this is just getting around, all of this is really challenging, and then, you know, when you ask a question like, could you, could you do that? Could you talk about time spent with COVID patients? I mean, I saw both Tim and I'm thinking, you know.
You come up with some comfort.
Well, due to the ICD trends on those, yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's worth thinking about, because, you know, as as much as you weren't in the service of COVID every day in a pandemic, it's hard to argue that EMS is not in the response to the global pandemic, so it took a hit in a, in a significant direct and indirect ways, so that's good to be thinking about that. From this, the, you know, I I think a public meeting might be beneficial, I I think there's some, there's a moment here for businesses, including childcare businesses who've been hit by this, to have some benefit hearing from others what they have experienced, and and I I don't, I don't think that would be a bad thing.
Um, no, I don't think so either, but I think you need to be clear, and there is
Parameters, there's parameters.
Certain things
Yep.
in getting public input, but we have to make sure we define what those things are.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, you're gonna get something off the wall, it's like you must act right there, because you can't do it.
I wonder if it could be outlined, so the, you know, the parameters working with the outline and kind of a little narrative, hopefully not very long narrative, a little narrative, and then, you know, promoted that way. Conducted as a webinar where, you know, the overview, it's just like all the webinars we've been subject to through all of this, and you gotta get a sense of the the rules. And then if people have to drop off, because they can see that what their needs are do not align with the the treasury rules, then that's what happens, but um I would be very happy to participate in that and the promotion of that and the prior, you know, work prior to that to understand concerns, um as well as possibly a list of research, you know, research that we're aware of, that businesses may have tapped and not had success with, that are still available, I mean, it's just, it's constantly a moving target.
And you said this is a three year type of plan. I mean, to me, the first two that would definitely warrant it is the water sewer and then the software upgrades. Me, and and I'm open to the transportation one and everything else, I think is probably a progress. Um, but I like the plan, I like it, so.
You'd like to see commitment from this group for that water sewer?
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's worthwhile, I mean, as me.
Yeah, um, I mean.
I mean, everything in there is probably worthwhile, I you put ten thousand to to childcare, you could plenty, I mean, I
Yeah.
It's what's neat, if they're out there and they come off comments.
Would would you all entertain that we publish the grant program and then just see what kind of demand, and then instead of routing that through the Port Authority, it just comes back to this group, that there's these needs that couldn't be met by the deed grant that we will hopefully be getting and put that way, or?
Is there benefit to having it be addressed by one group or the other? I guess the only benefit I can imagine is the Port Authority has seen the application for the relief that's been extended to businesses, they have that working understanding would be my, that's the only I kind of can imagine.
Can we hit this in the newspaper or something? So we can publish this chart newspaper and say, you're looking at ideas? And so when we come back for the next meeting, we have time for feedback to kind of kick back this.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe skip the public hearing and reach out that way.
The newspaper and then do public Facebook website, okay.
Website, Facebook, whatever you want.
Okay, and this, we just say this is like a draft plan and then explain the parameters and try to get feedback, okay?
If people have a serious need, they will reach out to you.
Okay.
We just want to just make it clear about that, that we want to do the computer system replacement and also financial software. Was that money's out of the uh, the pile? Yeah, I think that's good.
Mm-hmm, and do you want an actual uh motion on those commitments of this group?
Um, maybe in approval to publish this draft plan in the paper and move forward with the water sewer computer system replacement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think I already got some bids back, so that's gonna be handled by utilities, so. Basically, they would approve the bid, right? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great, we have a first, we have a second? We have a second from Dean, first was from Brian, uh, all those in favor? Excuse me, any further discussion? We've had the discussion already, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Oppose same sign, great, thank you for this, and just keep us I mean, be interested to hear in your, in your, you know, until alert us in your administrator's report, if you're starting to get feedback.
Mm-hmm. The Wabashaw, I think Wabashaw does have large following, so I think it'd be easier to share it, yeah.
Good idea. Okay, then we have the resolution um twenty, twenty twenty-one to apply for Minnesota management and budget for the twenty twenty-two capital budget and state bonding for the port facility.
So I had to make a last minute decision to apply to the MMB for the Barge Terminal facility, and this is just kind of at direction from our local legislature, and speaking with Chuck, actually, he still thinks that the way to go is through the Port Authority program, which we're pursuing, but this is a backup option. And so I don't have a resolution. And so we need to approve the resolution and establish a priority between the two submitted projects, the Highway sixty reroute project or the Barge Terminal. And I would, my staff recommendation is that we would prioritize the Highway sixty reroute simply because hopefully the P DAP is an opportunity, but that's not to say that they aren't important, but um.
So your staff recommendation is the Highway sixty, but we have the resolution drafted to determine whether that's a first or, whether the port is a first or second priority, okay?
But the rest of it, it's pretty loose, it's just saying that and I contacted the personnel and they said that's absolutely fine to send the resolution after the fact, I have a contact, they are waiting for this resolution.
Okay, and that reasoning is because we think we're gonna get the port funded through a separate means, and we were not gonna need this to do that, but it's kind of a backup.
Yeah, coming, coming to think about it, we also have other funds, potential funds for Highway sixty, but the Highway sixty is very expensive, more complex and, but it's kind of hard to say which is the priority.
So you
Kind of a toss.
Yeah, you have
But, yeah, I like the Highway sixty, in the end, it's gonna do the most good for them, for the population, probably, people.
Okay, so you've made application, they're awaiting a resolution, where we named this a first or second priority.
Mm-hmm.
Your staff recommendation is Highway sixty, and you need some action.
Yeah, so this project is a second priority.
Right.
The port project.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
And this resolution supports an application for the Port Authority, and that we support the realization of that Port Authority project.
I think we actually understand where we're at. Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll say that the port be the second priority.
We have a motion that this port project is the named second priority, we have a motion by Craig, second by Brian, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Oppose same sign. And thank you for helping us with that. Now, the adoption of a revised resolution to apply for Minnesota deed funds and adoption of duplication of benefits policy.
So yeah, I got feedback from Minnesota Deeds, which means that they're looking at it, but they said that I had originally said that the Port Authority was doing this policy on duplication of benefits, which means that we're making sure that businesses aren't double dipping in grant funds. And they said rewrite it, so it says the city of Wabashaw is gonna be the authority on that, and I'll be managing it. So that's been revised accordingly, and then I had to revise kind of the the amount of funds, because they're not gonna consider projects that expand businesses, which is just the way it is, um, and so I had put in an email to everybody, could we flex and have the Port Authority make the terms on a USDA revolving loan more flexible to defer payment up to two years, do a fifteen year amortization? Or do we also, you know, allow some matching grant funds? Because like I said, I specifically, I had the front porch say they could use help creating their outdoor dining. The second one was the Anderson Hotel that said they wanted to do touchless entries, needed some help with that. Then we had the porch repair from the Turning Waters Brewery, or the Turning Waters Bed and Breakfast wanted to do some outdoor seating, so none of that would be eligible, so again, with that American Rescue Act funds, we could help those projects. So I'm just asking
And one more to me was the um, formerly known as Eagleness, what's bringing push up, they also indicated expansion would be their solution versus HVAC.
So I'm just asking for approval of the revised resolution and duplication of benefit policy. And again, this is just signing down the data line and resend that back. And then, um, I think earlier you said you're willing to consider additional grants to small businesses, so that'll be included in that draft plan.
Okay, so the big piece on this, Dean, is that um, I think it's promising that they're giving you this level of direction, wouldn't you? I mean, deed is reached back to Caroline related to our application for funds and saying it can't be the Port Authority who makes sure people aren't double dipping, it has to be the city of the authority, so that's just a, I mean, we're getting clear direction on that. And then you're recommending matching funds with ERA, we're saying ERA, that A R R A, the old two thousand and seven ERA is gonna get confused with the new American Rescue Act.
I, I actually might have misstated what.
I, I just said it, and I don't know if it's a thing, I probably seen one too many webinars, okay? So we have that in front of us. And it's even in a deed format, it looks like.
Hmm, okay. I added extra language and said, don't do that, just fill out a billable PDF, I'm like, okay. Don't do any extra work.
Right, right.
Just for the record.
I'll move to accept.
Super, we have a motion from Tim, who we have a second, great, we have a second from Jeff, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Oppose same sign, all right, well, that's positive. It'll be adaptive. Okay, now to the donation.
No, ten nine.
Ten nine was, um, I forget, I know I would, Judge, thank you.
Um, as you all have probably heard, so they all got in the way to talk. Uh, we we need to look for, seriously, start looking at the process of getting a slew stretch. Um, we've reached out to the DNR in the past and said, no, I don't think we can take no for an answer. We just need to figure it out and get it done. Um, I know it's not a short process, uh, you know, it's gonna be a lengthy one. Um, but I think all the time, you seriously start looking at it and getting what I'm processing, whatever that may be. Uh, first, we need to find out talk to somebody that don't want the process of, um, but
What problem might we solve?
The weed drop. The the fact that you can't monitor
Water quality.
Where are you talking about dredging to?
I'm, I'm looking at uh, the Herbert.
Oh.
Iceberg and the Home Park. I don't know if we're really much beyond that. Um, but that's this is just a discussion phase, I don't know what the citizens want out there, I know a couple of them want to get damned in.
A coipond, is that what we're making that?
But uh, but we seriously, uh, uh, we're gonna start building uh, orders, uh, bringing them, turning them down, so, uh, we're all ready to renew Big City and so forth. Um, we have a problem years ago where we charged uh, an accessory to launch your boat there, uh, before the DNR took over, and we lost a lot of revenue because of that, they went to Big City and elsewhere to launch your boats, and that affects our local business community too. And um, and now with that, our citizens, we're, I had one uh, resident talked to me and he goes, I don't care what you get to do, raise my damn taxes, two thousand dollars, just get it fixed, and it is a mess down there. Um those weekend, a couple of orders, uh, they had to clean out the props three times, just to get out to the main town. And uh, um, there's no more excuses. Uh, it's still in them, when I was a kid, we were, we were able to die in that group, now if you told the needed people, you just get no.
That was horrible, yeah.
And it's uh, it's a problem, I mean, you just
I gotta pull it down there.
Not a problem. Not gonna go away.
When we, yeah, when we embarked on this Greater Minnesota, I feel like I broke a microphone, Greater Minnesota Futures touched on a lot of issues, and a lot of it was related to that slew, and they would like us to not call it slew, but that's what it is, but, you know, just as an, as an amenity and certainly
Call the whole number.
Yep, exactly, that's, I think that's what they suggested, so you're already ahead of me. But um, because I'll keep saying slew and get corrected over and over again, but uh, the, there were a couple suggestions from a project team that's familiar enough with DNR requirements, and I think had done their homework, and one of them was aeration. And another one was um, uh, from the, actually, soil and water conservation, not on behalf of them, but I talked to Jen Walls about it, and she thought even some of the buffer plantings that were outlined in the concept that we all saw would significantly help, when I know
I think, I agree with that, I think that's down the road a bit, because I think you have to budget first, and then do the aeration, you know, uh, a prevention of runoff and so forth.
Well, what we hadn't experienced when those conversations happened, which, you know, I'd be interested in others' feedback or thoughts on this over the years, I'm sure there's been low water, is this just this significant low water issue?
Yeah, but every year, even when we had the high water
It's still great.
Last year before, it's still a problem.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it started way back, you know, fourth area behind Dick, uh, and it's just directly closer and closer to
So my point was, and this is, this is a, this will not lead to a direct action on anybody's part, but when I, when you mentioned this to our project team, our, our project team on Greater Minnesota Futures said come on Craig and Emily, you guys are in city council, when you meet with the core of engineers, which you're doing on a regular basis for other issues, make sure they understand what your goals are for your community. So we did that, and it was more well received than I think we thought it would be. And our, the team that deals with the dredge material management is not the team that would help us with that, but they did a kind of a referral to another program within the core. And basically, it's, they would have to investigate if the core had, had a if core activity had resulted in some of the conditions that we have today, which could be argued, that there may be program if core activity had resulted in some of the conditions that we have today, which could be argued that there may be program resources there. And that's probably something that we should revisit. They can't do anything about low water, but you know, there may be other avenues to.
Right. I, I don't perceive the city paying for all of it. I mean, there's, there's, uh, the city, the county, the state. It's a, it's a, everybody's problem.
I'm wondering, who would pay for it besides the city? Would the DNR pay for it?
They don't even want us to do it. I know.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's gonna be difficult. It's compounded by the fact we got this problem going on and that's, that's gonna be a worry.
But even at the regular level. You can fill them off at the end of the doctor and you were never able to do that. Hundreds of.
Everything's filling in.
Yeah.
It's an actual process, but.
Well, I mean, it is an effort process, but do we want to, uh, plan softball fields in 15 years? Or do we want to still plan every ball launching or facility in 15 years? That's the question. I prefer ball.
Go with.
Well, yeah, I, I would just add that I did see that that was in the Minnesota Futures Grant. So in our bonding application, which again, we understand that's a long-term thing. I did include 1.1 million for dredging and aerators near Malone Park or in the proposed site that we've been talking about with the Highway 60 reroute. But, um, Ryan and Mom, for purposes of that application, put together rough estimates. And if it was four feet of dredging for that entire area, that would total approximately 1.1 million. If there's only two feet of dredging material, that would be 550,000. So we went with the 1.1 million. So it is in the finding request, but.
First, there is Malone Park. That's. I would say Ice Park and the Harbor are the two main ones.
Yeah.
Malone Park and that. And if you need to drop that out, drop that one out. But definitely the Harbor and Ice Park region. Uh, I would say Pool One, Pool Two, Pool Three. You know, it's pool come, the Harbor Pool One, Ice Park Pool Two and Malone Park Pool Three. I would say Pool One and Pool Two are priorities. You know, if Malone Park has to fill in, it'll be it. But I don't see air failures or anything working until we get that duffed back. And I don't think two or four feet is gonna make it do it. You know, I just don't see that. I, I would say five, 10 feet. I don't know. I'm not, that's why we need to contact whoever we need to contact. Get it going. So this discussion for the minute. I just want to public know that. We're going forward on something.
I've had a few people approach me and I've, you know, I've explained, some people don't even realize that, that there's a DNR element involved. To your point or Jeff's about, some people don't even realize the city owns the property. And some of it is just public education. And actually I had a few really good conversations that, you know, at least we're, at least we're thinking about the Malone Park element of it. But I, you know, to your point of outlining that and the bonding money, it doesn't mean that we can't, you know, refine, kind of refine what, what it's really gonna take. We don't want to put 1.1 million dollars toward that element if that's not gonna solve the issue. It's just gonna come out of the harbor, you know, so I think that's worth, worth revisiting.
Realistically, we're, we're talking millions of dollars. And it's not gonna happen tomorrow or next year or following. But it's gonna be a long process. We just need to stay focused on that process. And, uh, work it out. That's about it. I, I don't, I don't know what else to say, but.
Well, I think we should put it on, you know, certainly when it's on staff's mind. I know it comes up then when some of these plans are drafted. And I don't think it's not, I think it's on everyone's mind. We all see it, as I like to say, Malone Park. And I've even said this jokingly when we've, you know, been trying to recruit teachers or, you know, other workforce. I, it depends on what season it is. Sometimes I find myself, you know, shining a light on Malone Park because it's looking beautiful. Or sometimes it's like, turn away, don't look, don't look. It's our most beautiful and our most problematic.
Just so, just so the public knows, we do have a personal property in the little Pool Two, uh, Ice Park. At least according to what's coming even, we got a portion of property right in the center of that water. We do have some. DNR property anyway, I would think.
All right. Anything further on that matter?
Well, I, I mean, uh, I'm assuming there's quite a quackness or everybody agrees with this.
I think we all agree. Yeah. I don't, I don't think you have many, no objection here that we would like to see that addressed. It's an, it's an issue of, yeah, where, where, how's it prioritized? What, what are the realistic estimates? You know, to your point, is two gonna do anything? I mean, two, two feet drained out of there in no time. So what should the goal be? You know, where, where are their levers of control? What's the DNR's current position in its current state? And is that a habitat, stable environment? Doesn't look like it. So, you know, if, if the species that are, you know, that they're trying to protect are smothered.
Here's a goal we had a local business, we know it's gonna drive that for the row and whole property. The study's back here by the way, somewhere in our, it's very thick, very thorough. And it was kind of, that proposal was going to be negative in the desert for a couple of years. But by now it would have been back to its natural state. And I understand that dredging does interfere with that. But, um, but it will come back, you know. Most of that market's coming from. The role of stopping.
If nothing further, I've asked Jeff if you'd mind reading the donations. We have a lot of generous donations this month.
Okay, for the library, we had $1,500 anonymous in memory of Jim Abbott. $500 anonymous for summer reading. $50 Chris Berry in memory of Judy McNally. $274 Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund and Selco for a community reads grant. $400 Friends of the Wabashaw Public Library for summer reading. $100 Kathy Garrity for summer reading. And fireworks donations were $100 from friend Diane Scholberg. $200 from Jean and Dave Woodley. $150 from the Old Triangle. $50 from Bruce Kinlan.
Excellent. Thank you very much for those donations. Do we have a motion to approve the July donation? Thanks. We have a motion from Tim and a second from Dean. Great. Yes. Thanks for everybody making, who made that possible. All those in favor? I oppose same sign. Unless we have any other announcements, we could entertain a motion. Oh, we have had our financials email. Thank you. And if we don't have any other announcements, we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
It's Tim. Second by Craig. All those in favor? I oppose same sign. Thanks, everybody.